Monthly, bi-monthly meeting Tuesday, February tenth, two thousand and fifteen. It is indeed a wonderful morning for us to gather to discuss, deliberate, and make progressive decisions on the county's business. At this time, I would like to call to the front the Reverend Ben Tippett, the Pastor of Freedom Worship Center in Lake Como, to lead us in our invocation. Please remain standing. I'm going to ask our accomplished librarian, Mr. Steve Crowley, our director, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's all please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father, we're grateful indeed this morning for the privilege we have of calling upon you. Your word says, "If we call upon you, you will hear us and even show us great and mighty things that we know not of." Thank you for this meeting and for our county commissioners. We ask for your guidance and leadership today. Bless our county, in the name of Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag, for the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you Pastor Tippett. Thank you, our brother Steve. Appreciate that very kindly. Commissioners, each should have received the minutes from the January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting. What is your pleasure on the minutes?
Move approval.
Proper motion and second for approval of the minutes from January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. It's always a joy to this commission when the Employee of the Quarter comes around. For January through March, two thousand and fifteen, we have recognition from one of our employees in the Public Works Division, Mr. Carl Karns. They didn't spell Carl right, but it's fine. Mr. Karns, please come. And Public Works Department representative, all please just kind of come a little bit closer to the front there. And I think we have some information that we would like to be shared to the general public on Mr. Karns. Does Don have... All right, Mr. Leary. And of course, Mr. Karns' family should be definitely up here. Karns' family, please come, those who are representing.
Carl is the Construction Inspector with Public Works. Carl started with the county in nineteen eighty-eight as an engineering technician. He was promoted to Area Supervisor in nineteen ninety-two and promoted to his current position in two thousand and ten. So we want to congratulate Carl for being selected the Employee of the Quarter. And just as a reminder, Carl's selection was made by a committee of his peers. So congratulations, Carl.
My mother and sister, come over here closer to us. Employee of the Quarter awarded to Carl Karns in recognition of exemplary service for quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Awarded the certificate from the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, given this tenth day of February, two thousand and fifteen. Again, we congratulate you for being such an exemplary employee within our department. And when you shine, that makes our entire county shine, and we are extremely grateful for the service that you provide above just the everyday norm. To accompany this certification that we are presenting you is an envelope that somehow someone has typed your name on it. And I'm sure that, again, they spelt everything right, but they...
It's a bill.
Yes. This time, it's not a bill from the county.[250.12][250.12](laughter) But it may be something that you can look back on this status and appreciate the love that your counterparts have all shared as well. So again, from our hearts to your heart, thank you so very kindly. I appreciate it.
Fish out of water here. Thank you very much, and it's important to the employees to remember.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you very much. And it's likewise important to us when our employees shine like Mr. Karns. Again, such a wonderful example of what's happening right in Putnam County. Thank you again. We've asked Commissioner Lible to present this morning from Public Works, the National Engineers Week Proclamation. And again, I'd like for the Director, Assistant Director, to please join us there in Public Works. We've got you doing a little workout this morning, but please come, all the engineers that are here and present.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll wait for them to get here. I'd like to commend all of you. You, every year, get a lot of awards. So I think that in the Engineering Department, we have quite a bit of talent here in Putnam County, and I'm very delighted to read this proclamation. And I'll start. Proclamation number two thousand and fifteen dash ten, National Engineers Week. Whereas professional engineers have made significant contributions to Putnam County throughout its history and are responsible through their creativity for the technological achievements that have improved the quality of lives and helped us compete in an increasingly technological world. And whereas there are presently some licensed professional engineers practicing in Putnam County who hold major responsibilities for the benefit and protection of Putnam County citizens in the areas of public safety, health, welfare, the environment, transportation, structures, water power, and communications, as well as mechanical, electrical, and electronic devices important to every day of life. Wow, that's a lot of responsibility. Whereas engineers contribute to the education of our young people, especially in the fields of mathematics and science, to meet even greater challenges in the future. And whereas National Engineers Week, founded in nineteen fifty-one by the National Society of Professional Engineers, is always celebrated at the time of George Washington's birthday in February because he was our first president and a military engineer. And whereas the National Society of Professional Engineers has selected "Make a Difference" as its theme for the two thousand and fifteen National Engineers Week. And whereas the purpose of National Engineers Week is to increase public awareness and appreciation of the engineering profession. Now therefore, the Putnam County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the week of February twenty-second through February twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, as National Engineers Week in Putnam County, Florida, done, ordered, and adopted this tenth day of February, two thousand and fifteen. And I'll offer that in a motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a proper second. Time to consider. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. This is done, ordered, and adopted. Thank you so very much. Congratulations. Most of our citizens throughout the county, our position is make it happen, but we recognize that if it's not happening in your office as an engineer, that it does not really happen in the field. So thank you again for all that you do to enhance what we do each day. Mr. Corbick.
Just want to say a few remarks. As you see, there's only a few of us. And I don't know in the audience if there are any engineers out there. There are not very many of us, but we have to make a difference in our community to make sure everything is safe out there and all the services are provided that everyone needs. We touch everybody's home and their livelihood and their safety every single day. So we're proud of what we do, and we sure wish there were more of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the Honorable Lynda Myers here, representing March of Dimes. And we do have a proclamation to be read as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Putnam County Proclamation number two thousand and fifteen dash oh-eight. Whereas one in seven babies born in the U.S. are born prematurely resulting in heartache and anguish for families, serious health issues for babies in our community, and billions of dollars of cost for care, and is one of the leading health threats to our children. And whereas the March of Dimes, a voluntary health organization, began in nineteen thirty-eight when radio announcer and comedian Eddie Cantor urged his listeners to send their spare dimes to the White House to contribute to a fund for finding a cure for infantile paralysis, now known as polio. And whereas for more than seventy-six years, the March of Dimes has been safeguarding Americans' infant health, has been a pioneer in eradicating polio and reducing premature birth rates through programs of research, community service, education, advocacy, and prenatal care. And whereas the March of Dimes with our community teams kicked off the two thousand and fifteen fundraising season this January with Walk Chairman or Chair Lynda Myers, and will continue activities until the official march for babies in April. The march was initiated in nineteen seventy to raise funds that support critical March of Dimes programs and in recent years is known as the Walk for Babies. The Walk has been successful for forty-five years, raising more than two point three billion dollars for the mission of safeguarding the health of America's babies by reducing premature births and infant mortality. And whereas the nation's hope for assuring future generations a healthy start in life is assisted by the efforts and commitment of Americans to participate in fundraising events like Blue Jeans for Babies at offices and schools, chocolate sales, raffles, and other team fundraising events leading up to the Walk for Babies. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of Commissioners, that the next two months be a time for raising funds and awareness for this worthy cause, culminating with a walk at the Palaca Riverfront on Saturday, April eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to support the efforts of the March of Dimes in helping give babies a healthier start in life by participating and contributing to various March of Dimes team fundraising activities, done, ordered, and adopted this tenth day of February, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Chairman, I move approval for this proclamation.
Second.
We have a proper motion and a second for approval of the proclamation for the March of Dimes Walk for Babies. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Hearing none, it is now hereby done, ordered, and adopted. Congratulations, and thank you so very much for your leadership this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, other invited guests, and guests at the dais. First, I would like to say that I know I stand amidst a group of folks who, over the twenty and twenty-five years we've been doing March of Dimes Drives, if not longer, here in Putnam County, I have a lot of former Walk Chairs here. And I certainly would like you, if you're a former chair, to please stand at this moment.
Good deal. Congratulations.
Although we highlight these chairs because they worked hard their year, this is a year-round activity by many teams. We have twenty-five to thirty active teams that year-round believe a healthy baby is the future of our community. And so this is what March of Dimes is. I just want to briefly let you all know that our goal this year is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Not hard to make. Last year, we made seventy thousand just on chocolate sales alone. So all of you who are in the audience and our Commissioners and the Clerk's Office, a dollar chocolate bar gives our teams fifty cents. That's a good return on that dollar, and I know you're going to love that chocolate. It's the world's best. All of our teams are selling it. And by the way, while I'm here, I'd certainly like to give, acknowledge the county employees, team captains, and that would be Tabitha Lassiter. And your co-chair is Debbie Wilkinson. And they have been working year-round to make, to raise that a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And I just would like to add this before I move on, and that is thirty-nine. What's the key there? And if you've been with March of Dimes before, you know the key is thirty-nine weeks. That's what the mantra for March of Dimes is, thirty-nine weeks, babies are worth the wait. So that's our mantra, and we hope that you will buy thirty-nine chocolate bars this season. And I want to touch on one other thing. I know folks know, and this poster has a picture of a young baby girl from Putnam County. Her name is Felene. She will be at the Walk. She is currently still at Shands and has been there for two and a half months, but will be at the Walk. We're told she's going to be coming home soon. So that's one aspect of our Walk. Every day, you can go in Shands in Gainesville, and you will have a Putnam County baby there. They are changing our community, one baby, one family at a time at Shands. But the other effort that March of Dimes does, and we don't see it, and that's where a lot of this money goes, it's in curing diseases that impacted our world, not just our nation, that impacted our world. The funding for the Salk vaccine that eradicated polio, ninety-nine percent of the world, we still have a couple pockets, came from March of Dimes funding. So we see it in our communities by helping one baby and one family, but we actually see it worldwide in changing the health successes of our babies. So I welcome everyone to join a team, commit to a team, and if nothing else, just buy a bar of chocolate. Thank you for inviting us here today to recognize and bring visibility to this great cause.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Myers, while you're here, we're going to give a little plug. Bill Futch, myself, and Tabitha, we're cooking fish here on March, Friday, March sixth, from eleven to two. And I just figured out we need to sell thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dinners to make the profit so you can have a hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
I'm with you.
You know, but the dinners are eight dollars apiece, the fried fish, baked beans, coleslaw, and hush puppies, Friday, March sixth, eight dollars per dinner. Please come, going to be right out front. We look forward to having you.
Well, let's all make it a date for lunch. And Tabitha, I have some posters for all of your departments. This is a poster of a beautiful little girl named Felene and me, the Walk Chair, but she's a beauty, so you're going to have to have this to enjoy. And if you will indulge me for one moment, we have something special going on in the Crescent City Government Office. And I would love to invite Clerk of Courts Tim Smith, Tim Parker from Property Raiser's Office, if he's with us, and Charles Overturf to join me, because we want all of our citizens, as well as the Commissioners, to know what's happening. And I actually have an advertisement that was posted in the Courier-Journal. It was last week, and it will be there this week, so it should be no surprise to some of us who read this journal. But Tim, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you.
Well, thank you, Lynda. It's an honor to be here today. But what we're celebrating is twenty years of service at our Crescent City Satellite Office. And we wanted to take this opportunity to not only highlight the services that are available there, but to also thank the citizens that come visit that center so that, just as we did a couple of months ago when we celebrated the Interlochen Office's twenty-year anniversary, this is the time to celebrate the Crescent City Office. So so many services that can be obtained there, which affords the citizens an opportunity to get those services without having to drive all the way to Palatka to get those, really is a service that we're proud of and that we thank you for supporting our efforts with the Crescent City Satellite Office. And it's just a wonderful office down there, and a number of you use that at times for different events that you have. It's always open. And just recently, we've had the Supervisor of Election come down and use that facility. So I'll turn it over to him to tell you about what he does there. Charles.
Thank you, Tim. We have only been there for a year and a half, but we have, with the help of you all in the city of Crescent City, you know, have established in the very large back room back there, the early voting site, and now a precinct location. And we're getting a lot of compliments about the fact that it's so large as compared to where we've been in the past. So we're just excited about it. We've got a few things to work out, but we're just proud to be there. We're proud to be able to help and serve the members of South Putnam anytime we can, you know, as far as that, but especially in the voting arena, so, which we know is so important. So again, thank you to you all for your help in allowing us to be a part of this with these other fine people here.
And if you'll let me close, obviously, we're all too young to have been here twenty years ago.[1143.33][1143.33](laughter) But I am privileged to have in the audience someone who was here and had the foresight twenty years ago to know we should have an office in Interlochen, in West Putnam, and also in South Putnam, so that we make it more convenient to facilitate government in those areas. And that would be the former Tax Collector, Ken Mahaffey. And he had the foresight. Ken, are you still here? You are.[1166.83][1166.83](applause) So please join me in thanking him. And this is such a good point. Hopefully, we'll have not only the thank to the citizens, but there are going to be seminars going on or just educational workshops all afternoon, well, actually, starting at ten o'clock. So Tim Parker and staff will be at the Crescent City Office from ten a.m. to twelve p.m. And they are going to be talking about, I think the main topic's going to be exemptions, but any question you have involving their office, they would be glad to. But with exemption deadline coming soon, they know they'll have questions. The Honorable Tim Smith will be with us from twelve to one. He chose the lunch hour. Hmm, I bet he heard we're having a good lunch or something. He'll be there to talk about all the different things. Of course, that Clerk of Courts has a broad range of activities, and they'll be there talking about marriage licenses, recording, and so forth. And I will be there from twelve to four with staff from the Tax Collector's Office. It's a good time to talk about installment payment plan, which is an awesome opportunity for our citizens. If you don't know about it, please ask me, but we'll be there for that reason. And then Charles will be joining us with staff from two to four to talk about all the important things about our democracy and how we keep it safe and sound by voting. And finally, so if you follow those hours from ten to four, we'll have staff down there and Constitutional Officers who are just excited to be there.
And what date is that?
I'm sorry, Thursday of this week, the twelfth, at the Crescent City Government Office. And we'd love to have you. I know it's a great opportunity for Commissioners. A number of you attended the Interlochen Open House, and it was a great chance to speak to folks who were just pleased to have you there as well. And with that, I think we'll sit down and let the rest of this agenda go. Thank you.
Thanks again to our Constitutional Officers, and thank you for your open mind and optimistic heart to make sure that the quality of services that are provided to all of our citizens are being handled throughout this county and not just in the central Putnam area. So again, we thank you. The next part of our agenda is Public Comment section. We do have public meeting comment cards that are at the entryway of both main entrances coming into our meeting room. We also have copies of the agenda because we want you to be fully aware of what we're discussing and why we're discussing the issues. Under the Public Comment section portion of this agenda, it does give citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. We do ask you if the area in which you are addressing is specific to a department, that you would have at least contacted that department or have evidence that you've contacted that department to try to get the matter resolved before coming to the Board. When we are not aware, in prior to the meeting of the Commission deadline about the issue, that means we have not had opportunity to study the issue, and it's not reasonable to expect that we can or will deliberate and debate it unless we do have a packet to indicate what, you know, what is being discussed. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes there, so please be precise. And if more than one person is talking about the same issue, please just authenticate your agreement or disagreement with the previous speaker. Coming to us initially will be Mr. Phil Sykes and I believe Mr. Rand Peterson. Their subjects are related. You can both come at the same time, and whichever decides to speak first, please do that. Thank you for coming.
My name is Phil Sykes. I live at one forty-six Hicks Ave. in Crescent City. First of all, I want to say that the county came down last week, and they did a hell of a job in digging the ditches on our road. It really looked nice. And on the other hand, when they come down with a grader, they make one hell of a mess. They dig all the debris up on the side of the road, they dump it in the road, and we have to wallow through it for about two or three weeks or till a month sometimes, like today, when it rains, we gotta, the car's kind of like I'm in a snowbank. I feel like I'm back up in upstate New York when it's snowing. But it's quite a mess. And not only that, the point is, once they dump all this stuff in the road, it comes down, it fills the ditch up again, and it runs out into the, into our canal. When it rains, that's soot from the road. I'm surprised that the riverkeepers haven't complained about how much soot goes in the road, or silt, excuse me, from when they do the roads. We just like to, we like to get with the County Road Commissioner and maybe with Nancy Harrison, figure out what we can do with this. Because this happens every, about every month, they come down. It seems like it finally settles down, and then they come in and they start all over again.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. If you want to add to that, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I do. My name's Rand Peterson. I live at one twenty-four Hicks. One of the things that's been going on is every six weeks, when a road grader comes through, like Phil says, he tears the place up. I went ahead last fall and took a truckload of gravel and put it in front of my home because I was tired of my property damage. I was tired of my vehicles. I was trying to drive them through all the mud puddles. So I had this all laid out real nice and pretty. I've got pictures of it and everything else, if you'd ever like to see them. And I had it all cleaned up, and I, when the road grader come down, I said, "Please, just bypass my spot because my roads is nicer than it's ever been for, since I've owned the property. And I've had the property since ninety-seven." And he said, "Okay." Well, a few days later, Todd Adams comes down, and he tells me, "Guess what? This isn't acceptable. Citizens of the county cannot put anything on our roads." And he kind of, him and I agreed to disagree for a short conversation. And today, that hundred and fifteen feet of gravel that we used to drive on, it would protect my property, has been tilted over by the road grader. And our point is, I've talked to all my neighbors, other than three, the first three neighbors in the road I haven't talked to, I've talked to all my other neighbors, and we're all in the same agreement. We do not want that road grader down the road if you're going to destroy our road. If you cannot do the job properly, don't do it. And that's all we're asking for. We're asking for some type of material be put on our road that will take and create a better road. If you're not willing to do the job properly, and I asked Todd about this, he told me this, "He don't have the material to do it. You don't have the money to do it." He told me he didn't have enough trucks to do it. He don't have the manpower. He stood there and gave me all these excuses. And then he told me he couldn't take and go past my house with the road grader. And I'm thinking, you know what? I built road graders. I worked for John Deere in the manufacturing industry for thirty years. I do understand how a road grader works. I've operated a road grader. And you know what? All the man had to do was come up, raise the blade, drive over past my gravel, and then put the blade back down and go again. And he was telling me that they would take up too much time to do that. But you know what's funny? I can't tell you how many times I've sat in front of my driveway or gone up in my road and seen the person operating the road grader sitting up there smoking a cigarette in the cab, reading the magazine, reading the paper, something like that. Now, we've got time for that, but we don't have time to help a citizen out protect his property. And quite frankly, I'm just appalled at the terrible condition of this road, the customer service that I've got from the area supervisor, he has not given us any. We've, I've had him here at the house, we've discussed it, and I'm tired of fighting with him. I don't want to fight with him. I've come to you people, and if we've got to have a meeting of some sort, I'm more than willing to get together, my neighbors will get together. There's more neighbors, unfortunately, there's only four of us could be here today. There's more of us that are concerned, and we can get more neighbors. If it takes all of us, we can work something out because we're all tired of it. We've had enough of driving down a lousy road, having our vehicles again. I got pictures of how much damage and how much crud gets on our vehicles every time it rains. And what happens is, every six weeks, when they come over and stir this back up, and make a great big pile, it's all loose impediment. So guess what? It rains. It rains all the time. It flies all over our vehicles. We pull it into our garages, we pull it on our driveways. Last summer, it was so bad that my neighbor wouldn't even pull on my driveway because he didn't want to damage, you know, put mud all over my driveway. And that's why I put the gravel out, just to kind of give a, you know, so it scrubbed my tires and scrubbed the cars and throw stuff up in a good spot. Well, it's not there anymore because the county saw a fit to take and destroy that. So that's our position. Whatever we can do to get with you people to solve this problem, we would really like to solve the condition of our road because we're beyond upset now. It's getting ridiculous.
Mr. Peterson, thank you so much, and also Mr. Sykes, and for others who have come as it relates to the Hicks Avenue road conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Let me just address on behalf of the County Commission, first of all, thank you for the way you have come this morning before us to bring this matter to our attention. It is very important that we have citizens who are connected. We just had a proclamation that was Public Works-related, and I'm sure you were probably, you know, inside of you like, "Yeah, right," you know. But we do have a department that is good. We do have a department that does have issues when it comes down to some of the technical details. Communication is the key to the entire situation. I have issues when an employee who has a supervisor who also has a supervisor who also has a director, and it does not come all the way up to the proper level before it get to us, I do have an issue with that. That issue will be addressed today. As a matter of fact, before you leave this room, Public Works is here. They have overheard our conversation, and they will be meeting with you all, and you can start walking whenever you get ready. When you get up to start walking, they're going to be walking as well, and we're going to get some understanding as to what is happening and what is not happening on Hicks Avenue. I appreciate you complimenting there, giving the honor where the honor is due, but also appreciate your observation and the reality check of what you're trying to do to partner with us to make this area better. I don't believe in doing things backwards. We have to be progressive in what we do. I do have a problem and an issue, and since it's... I do have a problem and an issue, and since it's brought up publicly, I'm going to address it publicly. If our leaders in the field do not have the answer to our citizens' questions, those leaders should take that back to the office and not tell our citizens, no, 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 no. That's what the director is for. That's what our leaders are for. And I'm going to ask you all to talk with all of the leaders, supervisors in the field, make sure that if they do not have the proper answer, don't agitate a citizen who's already agitated by telling them all of those adverse things. So before you leave, the director's here, assistant director's here, and they will do the necessary follow-up.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to be included in a meeting. If you want to go ahead and set a date and let me know, just don't make it on a commission day and I'll be there.
Okay. All right. Thank you so very much, Public Works, and thank you again, citizens from Hicks. Okay. Ms. Faith Parkman, you're next speaker. Your card says hearing and VA. Okay, is the hearing something that's on the agenda? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank you because the last advisory board meeting, guess what? They all sat up there and we could hear. Five people told me thank you that day. I got a phone call because somebody saw it on Mr. Harold's TV station telling me thank you. They didn't know we had hard-earring equipment in this room. So I told him the lady in the back's real nice. As a matter of fact, I went back and got him his this morning. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I would like you, Mr. Flag, to write the governor a letter because he wants to get two more VA nursing homes built in the state of Florida. You've already had your ground, I believe, approved for one, so if you guys could write a letter to the governor and ask for one of them to be here, please, because I have met so many veterans at the VA that when it comes time for them to go nursing home, there isn't one near. Also, when I was out last Tuesday, I found out that we have 3,000 veterans in a three-county area on oxygen. So that tells you there are the veterans here, so we do need nursing homes. So maybe you guys can do something about by writing him a letter.
Thank you so much, Ms. Parkman. Ms. Janet Smith, you're next.
Good morning. I brought this up last time and I kinda want to give you some information, and I don't expect to solve this today. I know this is a long meeting, but I do want to bring it up. The blind gentleman that I talked about last time that was mistreated in a lab facility. Okay, first off, I want to say thank you because I sent an email to Commissioner Harvey, who sent it on to the right IT person, and they did indeed get a link on the website like they said they would, so hurrah for them. That's great. Commissioner Flag, you were correct. There are entirely too many ordinances because guess what? You can't find hardly anything. I went searching for the ordinance, which, you know, was to cover the blind person about that situation. And the only thing that turned up had to do with blind people and dogs that would be a problem. There was nothing to do with the situation that I found. Maybe it's there, but it was not findable. So having said that, ordinances probably is not the way to take care of that problem. However, I would like to throw some possible solutions out and invite people to think about this so we don't put someone in our county in that situation. Partly because, think about it, none of us would want to be treated that way if we were blind. It's a horrible thing to do to a person that already has enough problems. So can we look at some way of raising the consciousness level about that red white cane? The reason I bring that part up again is because I physically saw and heard everything that person said after he asked to say, I would like to be treated with respect, when he held his cane up and he says, look, this is a red cane, you know, a white cane with a red top, and you're supposed to recognize this by state law. And he was just pointing it out like this, well, the person in the back, when I asked them about that, they said that he threatened them. So, you know, if we can fix this so we don't have to go these places, that's, you know, not only is it demeaning to that person, but let's don't get into situations we really don't need in this county. So it seems like sometimes we have problems because we have this going on. That's your job. No, it's your job. No, that's your job. No, it's that job. So looking at it from what I observed, getting a blind person into a facility and get them set down in someplace safe and get them signed in should be the responsibility of the person driving them to the facility. At that point, it is very clear that the facility has to know that that person is there and treat them accordingly. So having said that, no, we don't have extra money in Putnam County, so can we do some other things that doesn't cost a lot of money to fix this situation? Can we ask the Palaca Paper to put something in there that reminds people, state law, that cane, be aware, you know, treat that person with respect, get them signed in? If, and I don't know about the county transportation system, I don't know, so I'm just gonna mention it. Can we make sure they know? Walk that person inside, get them sit down, get them signed in. You know, can we fax memos? There's just some other things. If we could raise awareness of that situation, it would stop a lot of discord. So thank you very much.
Thank you again, Ms. Smith, for coming. The Americans with Disability Act on the federal level certainly addresses the issues that you're raising to us, and we do also have local support groups that are specially engaged and involved there. And so hopefully through our dialogue today and two weeks ago, that we will be able to motivate them to have a campaign that will bring that level of awareness to a heightened level. So thank you again for raising that issue to us. Ms. Karen Chadwick is here to speak with us on a... Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to mention about the meeting last night about Rodman, that there were a lot of people there that are support restoration of the river. And they felt intimidated, I talked to several of them afterwards, and they felt intimidated to get up and speak. I mean, Mr. Davis got a pretty good smackdown and took his insults. And the riverkeeper, she was there. Most of those people that were insulting her probably couldn't pick her out of a lineup. And it's a very uncomfortable situation. You know, why would the supporters get up and face those sort of insults and criticisms? The one guy that spoke about what's settling into the bottom when they spray the herbicides and those toxins are building up, he got sort of heckled. At the end of the meeting, the guy behind me stood up and, you know, said, you know, this, this is, you know, it's not negotiable to remove the dam. And I didn't even say anything. And when I came in this meeting today, I was approached right in my face with confrontational questions. So I'm just asking, you know, there were a lot of people there claiming certain things to be truth about the scientific aspects of what's going on with the water. And, you know, you can read that on the, a lot of that's right off the Save Rodman website. And, excuse me, I just would like to see a meeting that's open to the public where the scientists from, if you want to call it both sides, I mean, it should be, they should be speaking from a scientific position, not from one side or the other. Can we just have a meeting where the science is explained and the economy is explained? They kept talking about jobs. Where are the jobs? All those bait shops have gone out of business all around there. Now, there's a lot more people going out there now with all the uproar, but if we could just have a meeting, I know Lisa Reineman wants to do that and has spoken to Commissioner Harvey about that. We could just have a public meeting where the science and the economy is really explained by the experts and not just people from both sides just making heated comments.
Thank you, Ms. Chadwick, for your observations. First of all, last night's town hall meeting was not a meeting to engage in debate. I tried to be as diplomatic of a chairman as I could be for all concern. I think that there are so many citizens in our community who are one extreme or the other. Now, the truth of the whole matter is, everybody becoming an extremist or militant is not going to accomplish anything. That's the first point I want to raise. Secondly, I have always preached civility and I've preached cooperation and coming together to reach a consensus so that when it's all said and done, we all win. We need to understand that this meeting last night was number one, it was not initiated by the Putnam County Commission. Secondly, at the request of the chair, Mr. Davis, who came, again, and people talked about his bravery and his, you know, his courage, I certainly had a hand in trying to make sure that the environment was an environment conducive for anyone who wanted to speak. I was certainly trying my level best to keep back, to a degree, conversation about the science and things of that nature because that was really not what last night's meeting was about. I believe that there are enough entities and organizations that are out there to put on their meetings based on their leadership, and I think that that should be done. As a matter of fact, I want to encourage all of the groups to come and also encourage all of our citizens to listen. You know, that, we don't have listening classes in school. We go to learn, we learn to read, we learn to write, but we fail in listening. And so I'm asking all of us to, first of all, understand that nothing has been appropriated there. It's gonna take money to do whatever the end result is there. And if all of us will be patient and allow all sides to discuss what their position is, then I think that sound minds and just reasonable deliberation will cause us as a county to move forward. I am weary of people telling us how bad off we are, singing to the choir. You know, we know that we have deficits, we know that we have issues, but on those areas that we can certainly create what I call a progressive Putnam Coalition on, by all means, all of us as citizens need to do that. We need to make that happen. So thank you for your comments this morning there. I regret anyone feeling intimidated from the pew, from the, you know, from the auditorium there. We certainly, from the stage, did not want that environment to exist on last night. So I look forward to all of the groups, whether it's an ecological group, whether it's an environmental group, or whether it's just a group with no name that is wanting to just state their case. I think that that is healthy dialogue and debate in this community for all. If you're having a coffee party at your house and you want folk to come talk about Rodman, do it. But respect everybody's opinion. Now, I'm going to say this at I'm gonna close because this is, you know, obviously not an agenda item. Science is what it is. Whoever's getting paid, whoever's paying them is paying them to say what they want to hear. Carl Flag is not interested in what the paid group's opinion is. I want to know what the facts are. And that's what this commission needs to hear. Now, I do recognize and realize that we have some leaders up here that sit with me as colleagues who are directly involved in Save Rodman. There is a difference in their responsibilities as county commissioners and as leaders in the responsible groups that they are in. And they have to maintain an open mind, just like all of us do on these issues here. And when we speak, we have to disclose, am I speaking as a county commissioner? Am I speaking as a leader in any specific group so that people are not intimidated and people are not feeling like it doesn't matter what I say, your mind is made up? I don't operate like that, and I believe my colleagues are optimistic leaders there. And let's continue to move forward. I am anticipating further dialogue on this subject, so thank you for coming.
Can I just add one more thing since you finished up my minutes? I appreciate your comments and the way you handled the meeting last night, trying to keep everything civil and even keel. And I just wanted to mention that while Lisa Reineman was really vilified in a lot of ways and environmentalist, you know, criticized, they've been very instrumental, and our group has too, with trying to slow down the consumptive use permitting and especially with Adena Springs Ranch. I mean, they've been working really hard to keep, try to keep more pollution, a lot of pollution from coming into the Akloaha. And if, I mean, she's been an ally for this area, not just her, the whole Riverkeeper organization, that, you know, they're not, I completely disagree with the way they went about this, this agreement up there in Jacksonville. That wasn't, that wasn't okay on any level, in my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but she does do, their organization does do a lot to try to keep up, you know, clean efforts for the waterways, for our community here. She's, she's not, you know, an evil villain trying to undo our community.
Yeah. And Ms. Chadwick, if all of the organized entities that are involved and that are truly concerned about both economics, environment, ecology, all of those things, if all of the leaders of those groups would certainly bring their peace pipes to the meetings there, set up a forum where all of those entities are represented and let it be a forum where they are discussing the position of their specific organizations and go in with the idea that we're going to reach a consensus at the end of the day. But right now, as long as everyone is deciding to bring, put on their war clothes and just come and we're gonna fight this out and somebody's gotta win and someone has to lose, with that mentality, we all lose.
I agree.
And especially in Putnam County. And right now, I'm more concerned about fighting within the county than I am an enemy outside of the county. That's my concern as chairman, because I'm not for sale and I'm not interested in who has the largest crowd on their side. I'm interested in what is in the best overall interest of Putnam County. And we are in this region. So again, thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. We have Ms. Elizabeth Bacon Smith. Good morning.
This is the... Are you in horse endurance run official tee shirt?
I have one of those shirts.
Yes.
I didn't run.
I know. And all of our volunteers got one. However, first I'm gonna start and I'm gonna be quickest if I just read. My first is to thank Larry and to thank Walton for coming out to Johnson on Martin Luther King Day. So, reading Walton's because it's not officially his territory, even though he has deep ties to it through his mom. Thank you, Walton, for coming out to Johnson after the Martin Luther King Junior Parade to show your support for our West Putnam and a community of good people committed to doing positive things for their people. All the best, Elizabeth. And the other has to do with the endurance run. People came who originated as runners, they originated though, from Austria, Bordeaux, France, a man from Korea who grew up in Maui, from the UK, Canada, South America, who was the winner of the men's, Atlanta, Orlando, Merritt Island, Deerfield Beach, South Africa. The runners are healthy people, living healthy lifestyles, who have an astronomical goal and the personal commitment to achieve it. They are openly expressive in their appreciation and gratitude for the support we give them at our aid stations. Our aid station number three was called an oasis with our disco music, our disco ball lighting up the night. Some runners even did a few steps of dancing with us. They start at 7:00 AM on Saturday, they run all day and through the dead of night in total darkness with only their miner's light lighting a short space of road beneath them and their feet. They left Putnam County feeling wonderful about us, and next year I'll do everything I personally can to have them singing our praises when they leave. This time, we gave them hot chicken noodle soup, tomato soup, salt, sugar and carbs and fat in various forms. Our real bathroom, which we deeply appreciate, and they appreciated even more, was cleaned and bleached three times throughout the time by one of our volunteers. We take care of the facilities, we leave it spotless. Any support that you can give for this event in Putnam County that brings us public notice from... public notice from all over the United States and the world is deeply appreciated. I almost forgot, this is crucial. This is to Larry because thank you for being at the finish line on Saturday morning. Dear Larry, and this, there's one for all of you, please be one of our rock stars next year by coming out to the start line of the start of the Iron Horse Endurance Run in Flora Home on a Saturday at seven AM. If you want to be a mega rock star, help us out at our aid booth for the runners. This is a hundred mile endurance run, and I have been more inspired by this event than I have any other in Putnam County in the twenty-five years I've been here, seeing what the human capacity is. It's unbelievable.
Thank you again, Ms. Bacon Smith. Uh, I want you to explain one other thing. How did Mister Harvey get to the finish line? You say he didn't, he was not at the starting line?
That's correct, Mister Chairman, I was not at the start line.
Alright, I just...
Mister Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to say something. I went out there Sunday morning and, uh, met with the race director, Chris, and the people that were coming across the finish line, hundred and seventy registration people that came out, about a hundred and forty actually did the whole run. And it was just remarkable what I saw. Um, I mean, after running twenty-six hours, people were still looking good coming across the finish line. And I would be like in bandages and dragging, you know, but, uh, they did really well. And they were so appreciative of Putnam County, the bike trail, Edna State Creek Park, the bathrooms, everything. They were, they couldn't have asked for more. And, um, I told them next year that we would all probably try to make an appearance in some fashion, if you will, so.
All of us do make an effort to make appearances to all of the community events, and and all of our citizens, uh, need to know that our county is extremely busy. And we are limited by time and space and certainly can't be but in one place at one time. And so when you see one representative, two representatives, or fi- all five of us at any event, uh, it it does not indicate that one event is more important than the other. Uh, we are a team, and it has nothing to do with districts, it has everything to do with us being ambassadors and liaisons throughout this county. So again, when two of us are there, please consider that five of us, because we all do make the effort to be in every corner of our county. Thank you.
And then if I could, Mrs. Smith, just, uh, add another thank you to our Tourism Development Committee through the Chamber of Commerce. It worked all year with this event coordinators. I see Mister Kelly Smith in the back. He, uh, led that effort, and we were very proud to be a a integral part of that. By our tourism, uh, development taxes, we refer to as heads and beds, helped promote that worldwide, uh, prominence that you just spoke of. And thank you for the accolades.
Can I add just one thing?
One thing?
I just was told this is the tenth year of doing it here in Putnam County, and I was there, I hung out after, after, after.
Come, come to the mic if you're gonna keep talking. Come to the mic very quickly, please.
This is the tenth year of doing it, uh, and I was there at the finish line when the very last runner, a forty-year-old woman from South Africa, who was determined to make her hundred miles, and she did.
I'm prepared to close the public comment section of this agenda if there... Let me finish talking and I'm gonna call for you. Um, I'm, I'm saying I'm prepared to conclude the public comment section of this agenda for those who have filled out, uh, comment cards, or we do have a couple of other cards, but they are for specific items on the agenda. Those who choose not to fill out a card, you still have opportunity to speak for three minutes, so please comment, state your name for the record. Thank you for these visuals, Mister Spell. Uh, tell us where we are and what what's going on.
Alright, I brought it to your attention at the last meeting right there where I live at, that nature trail that they, um, setting up now. Those ditches need to be cleaned. Every year when we get a lot of rain, I got to deal with that kinda problem, even to the point to some of my fish dies in my pond, but I've been hauling dirt in to try to burn that water up from coming in on my property. My neighbor, you can look at the one picture where the car at, that water done backed all the way up there near her house. And to me, I don't see why there hadn't been no preparation on doing some type of drainage and developing on the whole system, 'cause if you start right there behind racetrack, I don't understand, you know, and I'm not knocking nobody down. I come to these meetings and y'all give awards to these engineers for this and that and that, but anybody know, right there coming on Putnam Boulevard behind racetrack, when it rains, that water builds up in that road, but you got the nature trail five foot away from it, but there's nowhere for drainage to be put in, alright? Once you get the asphalt there, we get a lot of rain, you got several people traveling the nature trail, you got people flying through there in that water and wet everybody up into the nature trail. I see they moved one of the fire hydrants, but the whole trail should've had enough setback for road improvement and drainage. But everything is just being put down, and to me, you know, with engineers, most of the time you always plan for the future. But see, this here whole setup is just set up and it just go, you don't even have no, um, room to get off the road in some spots for an ambulance because there's nothing properly, you know, designed and set up, even on the smoothness of the dirt along the roadway. It's all lumpy and bumpy when the guys mow it, it look like, you know, just somebody just throwed something together. But you, you constantly give, you know, the employees awards, but when I started work, I was just glad to have a paycheck. But all this patting on the back and people in this county can ride and look at the conditions of the roads, the shoulders, the ditching, but then you come here and this person getting an award, let them be glad they got a job. And you know, it's just too much pampering and so much neglecting on things that need to be done. But if there any kinda way, could y'all do something about them cleaning that ditch so I don't have to keep dealing with all this water? Because there's only certain times I can even get in certain areas with my equipment because there's so much water in the back.
Thank you again, Mister Spell. Um, we certainly do share in the concerns that are are presented here, and, uh, they're valid concerns about how the water, um, is is not moving in the direction. The thing that I'm going to request is that, uh, you will get with staff before you leave and give us an explanation for the photos so that we will understand exactly what the picture is depicting, uh, for us to take the necessary action on. But thank you, picture's worth a thousand words, but if you'll give just a brief, uh, description of what you're seeing in these pictures, and I wanna make sure that our administrative, uh, office have, uh, that caption along with the commissioners here and, uh, and 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 of course, Public Works. And then that way accountability can come in and we'll know precisely how the issue can be resolved and know that i- it is being resolved. So thank you again.
Okay, well, the problem was when they put the dirt there, it stayed so long till it eroded into the ditch. And when they came back, when the state came back and got some of the dirt, what they didn't wanna take, they took and bladed it with a grater and a dozer into the ditch and it just covered the ditch. Now, it leaving all of us in a pocket to where the water is not draining in the natural ditch that was there. Now, the farmer right down the ways, he keep his ditch clean, but there's no one on the backside behind me, and all that dirt never was cleaned out. And to me, it don't make sense for them to spend all that money prepping that ground to put asphalt and then got to come back later and try to clean the ditches. If they clean the ditches before they put the trail in, it won't be no double work.
Okay, thank you, Mister Spell. I I do appreciate your commentary, and we will do our best. Once we can get the explanation of these photos there, we will all have that, and Public Works will have in our administrator, and we will have a plan.
Okay.
Thank you again. Any other public comment? Reverend K. Moore. Good morning.
Leroy K. Moore, one, one, seven Gladys Avenue.
Yes, sir.
East Polacko, Florida. I'm here again. This is New Year and this should be five years.
Yes, sir.
On the canal.
Yes, sir.
When do y'all plan to do something about it?
Reverend K. Moore, we do have, uh, a meeting that is forthcoming where we're going through, uh, each of the departments. Instead of going to, straight to the budget meeting, we're having some strategic planning sessions. And that canal is definitely, uh, one of the areas that we are, we're dealing with specifically, uh, there because we recognize and realize that that Dog Branch Canal is important to an entire area, uh, there, and the proper flow. Uh, we cannot continue talking about the manpower we don't have, the equipment we don't have, and all of those kinda things. There's some certain things in this county that has to happen, and we can't sit back and wonder if it's going to happen. We have to make it happen. So we are going to, uh, have that, uh, public workshop where we are doing our strategic planning, talking about the priorities. And the priority certainly, uh, uh, is, uh, one of the priorities is to deal with, uh, that drainage system that deals with such a large area, uh, there. And so it's not falling on deaf ears, we just have to have a strategic plan, and it has to be comprehensive to make sure that we're doing this thing right. Your patience is appreciated, uh, to the highest, and, uh, I know a bill of goods don't work with you, it don't work with me either, uh, there. But if you stay tuned to this station, uh, uh, you will be seeing, uh, uh, some definitive answers to the questions that you've had over the years.
Also, uh, um, I thank you for the million y'all throwed out there on the road, but that garbage truck is heavy.
Okay.
And it wasn't no foundation under that.
You're seeing some deficits as a result of the heavy trucks.
Also, all these great engineers here, five times last year, they come out there with the water coming down the road, and then it gets right to my driveway and go down under the cover, and the cover is full of sand. Now, we have another hole coming right at the edge of the concrete from the little bit of rain we had the weekend. Now, if we get a good rain, I won't be able to get out of my garage there, 'cause it's on the side of the road. And also, the, uh, other road there, Gladys, uh, Kelly Street. Though Kelly and Gladys were supposed to be paved back, and I believe my memory serves me right, it was under the FEMA deal. Now, we never got, uh, got those two roads paved, but now they paved the one up there by the machine shop, Ryan's Machine Shop, that road, but we still have been looked over.
Okay. Uh, again, from a logistics perspective, uh, w- w- we do have what I call five districts, and and the district connotation is a misnomer. Um, we're asking our Public Works to not think district, but to start thinking county. We're asking our commissioners, my colleagues, to do the exact same thing. Uh, we're also asking that when, quote, "a road is on a list," these roads have designations, and some of them, uh, it it goes all the way from a private-owned road, you know, all the way over to having a complete public-owned, uh, their county maintained versus private maintained. So there are a lot of designations is there. We're working on a comprehensive overall plan that if a road is on a prioritized list, that somehow or another, those roads do not get bumped unless there is a declared emergency. And so when times pass, I think that there've been times that that the 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 department has sought to put out the fires and to 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 get some things done, but in an effort to do that, there has to be method to the madness and rhyme to the reason so that nobody is thinking that, uh, we have just a mom-and-pop operation that's going on. So we are working on that, uh, Pastor.
I feel like these gentlemen right here because these roads was appointed to us, they were gonna be done in ninety-one.
Yes, sir.
And this two thousand fifteen.
Yes, sir.
And they still are not done. And as I was told, they did all of the roads supposed to be in that area under, uh, FEMA deal. But we was omitted out of that deal.
Well, again, I'm doing my level best with my colleagues, uh, that if a road has been prioritized and it's on a, quote, "list," unquote, then we are asking, uh, uh, our Public Works leadership to to ensure us that if a road is all of a sudden off of a list and it was on a prioritized list, to please, don't just do it, give us explanation as to why it's being done. So we are working that.
Not trying to put you on the spot, but how long does it take on a priority list? Because from ninety-one and this two thousand fifteen, how much more time we got?
Well, it's not a matter of the time, it's a matter of the process and the procedure. And when the process is not followed or the procedure is altered, uh, there then that does create a a what I would call an unnecessary and an indefinite delay. And that's what many of our citizens are 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 really complaining about, is because someone in a department, and it could've been all the way up to an elected official, made a, an individual a promise. And when a promise is not kept, but you don't go back and revise with the person you made the promise with, then that makes it a lie.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, excuse me for putting you off. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but there are a lot of roads out going down si- seventeen to where Satsuma.
Yes, sir.
And they have all gotten paid, and we are still over there sitting in a little hole.
All of the, all of the roads are scored. Our issue as legislative leaders is to make sure that whatever the process is, to ensure all of our citizens that, number one, there is a process. Number two, that that process is being followed and that there is no interference by any single person outside of the meeting that we're discussing with the priority.
I wanna be in that, I wanna be in the line to meet the engineer outside too.
Alright, sir. I'm sure they'll be ready. Alright, sir. Uh, thank you so very much. They are taking notes. Yes, sir.
Robert Bly, one sixteen Sand Lake Drive. Um, I agree with these people. I I am well-known in my neighborhood for, uh, having the oldest tractor that is still able to grade the road.
Yes, sir.
I have people come up to me when I'm grading my road and hand me money and say, "thank you," because a lot of times they can't, I mean, you could get, uh, around the potholes and things like that and and drive up on the wooded area, you know, in certain areas, but really what it, what it comes down to, what I see is, you said that there's a boss, and then he has a boss, and then there's that other boss. But then there's one guy driving a tractor, and the guy that's driving the tractor is the one that makes the most difference. I see three openings right there that someone like John Spels could fill. John Spels spends all of his time talking about all these ditches that we're having problems with. He sees things, he brings it to your attention. I don't hear them bringing anything to our attention in in meetings, so I'm thinking maybe there's too many chiefs and not enough Indians doing the work.
Alright, Mister Bly, thank you for your opinion. Uh, it is not the intent of this, um, commission for our department heads to come, uh, to these meetings to tell us what they're doing per se. We get reports, written reports and things of that nature. However, uh, accountability is important, and it is important for us to have, uh, supervisory individuals and directors and things of that nature who are competent and doing the things that they need to do. Uh, it does give us, uh, some degree of heartburn when our meetings become repetitious and 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 some of the, uh, complaints, uh, concerns, uh, observations, uh, seem to be repetitious. And, uh, it is not falling on deaf ears. And again, I use my same language from before. If you stay tuned to this station, uh, uh, and pause for station identification, you're going to see, uh, 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 a difference there. That is another purpose for our meeting next month, uh, there, because we we do realize that we have some some deficits. And and sometime it's 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 man, sometime it's material, and sometime it's method. And we're gonna get to the bottom of what it is and where the deficit is and how we can make, uh, what we do more efficient. So again, we we open the, uh, the floor all the time for comments. We welcome them, but we don't wanna keep hearing the same thing. So if we keep hearing the same thing, that mean we're doing the same thing, uh, there, and we expecting a different result, but it's not going to continue.
And that leads to what I was gonna tell you, that there are people who are willing to help. I myself help out all the time as much as I can. I'm a willing public servant.
Yes, sir.
And I'm willing to help in any way that I... And I'm willing to help in any way that I can. If you see a way that I can help you, tell me.
Yes, sir.
Same thing with John Spels or any of the others out here in this audience. We all wanna help see that Putnam County gets moved forward and we don't wanna be redundant and we don't wanna keep going over the same things, just like you don't. We wanna see, you know, something happen in the future and I, I appreciate the time.
Thank you again, Mr. Bly. Any further public comment? It's time we're gonna go into a five-minute recess. Consent agenda, item number seven, uh, the consent agenda. Thank you again for your patience and, uh, your endurance. On the consent agenda, item A, list of committee minutes, recommendations distributed to become part of the record. B is list of correspondence distributed to become part of the record. C is general services, list of surplus inventory. D, adopt a byway litter removal agreement, Putnam County Public Works, Putnam County Boulevard, from US seventeen to Cracker Swamp Road. E, sanitation renewal of agreement with Tag Grinding Services Incorporated in Crowder Gulf Secondary Disaster Debris Removal and Disposal Services through March thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. F, administration, ship emergency repair funds up to ten thousand dollars. Darrell Loop, Valerie Thompson. G, administration, ship emergency repair funds up to ten thousand dollars. John Mosdears? We'll get that straight later. H, general services bid fifteen oh six award, Putnam County Courier-Journal, forty-eight cent per line, advertising of unpaid delinquent real property, uh, taxes. I, sanitation bid fifteen oh nine award, Bell Corp Incorporated, eight dollars and fifty ton mulching, three dollars ton onsite, seven dollars ton offsite mulching and our transporter yard trash and vegetative debris. J, Public Works, um, addendum number four to continuing services agreement, Stone Engineering Group, fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars environmental work for federal easement application for, uh, National Forest Road twenty-nine paving. K, Public Works, FDOT construction and maintenance agreement for bike paths trail on east side of Memorial Bridge to Putnam County Boulevard. L, Public Works, bid fourteen thirteen award to Commercial Industrial Corporation, one million three hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cent. County Road three oh nine C embankment repair and mitigation project and a source of C hazard mitigation grant. M, Public Works, FPL, street lighting agreement, three hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-four cent. And that is in reference to the replacement installation of concrete utility poles along US seventeen, East Polack and the source again is an FDOT joint agreement. Commissioner Harris, do you have anything to pull from this consent?
I do not.
Commissioner Lebo?
Aye, please.
Aye? Commissioner Felcer?
I do not.
Commissioner Harvey?
I do not, sir.
Entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda with an exception of item I.
So moved.
We have a proper motion and a second further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item I, bid fifteen oh nine award Bell Corp Incorporated, uh, Commissioner Lebo.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I could call Mr. Gas from our sanitation department to the podium, it would be very helpful.
All right.
And I just, if I could, Mr. Gas, uh, this is on the bid tabulation and, well, Bell, Bell Corp, on the mulching, if you could just give an explanation, as we read through this, there's a big difference between the bid amounts and I'm not sure what price per ton onsite or offsite means, if you could just explain that.
The, uh, bid is for, uh, a ton per grinding and another cost is for hauling the ground material onsite or hauling it off of site to another location. And that's basically in case we have an incident where we have a tornado come through.
Mm-hmm.
And we have, uh, more vegetative material than our area will hold. Uh, we might have a couple of different places where, you know, this would be where it's not a national emergency where FEMA would come in, but it, it would be something that we would have to handle locally. That would be for them to help transport that material. That's what the, the two transports onsite and offsite. If they grind, if, if, if we bring everything onsite and we don't have enough space to put more material in, they'd take the ground material and move it to another area onsite where it could be used at a later time so we could get more material in for, for future grinding.
You, you could see my concern though, the, right above the seven dollar bid per ton is twenty-seven dollars per bid. What a difference.
Uh, we had to put this out for bid. We had two options and the one that was currently out and this is almost thirty percent more than what our previous bid was. Our previous contractor made a bid and it was more than double what we were paying in the last contract. And this is only a thirty percent increase basically of what it was in the last contract, so.
Okay. I, I, I just couldn't get, you know, any resolve on this, reading through it, so thank you.
We, we actually put it out for bid twice because we only had two bids and both of them, the first time, both of them were over a hundred percent increase in what our previous was. So, we put it out again, made sure it was advertised farther and we ended up with a, a smaller increase.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gas, I appreciate it. Mr. Chair, that's all I need.
Okay. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second?
Proper motion and second, item I, bid fifteen oh nine to be awarded, further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight on the agenda, Rosemary Anderson, Putnam, Alachua and Levy Public Library Cooperative, uh, PAL Annual Report on page sixty-eight in our packet. Good morning and thank you all
Good morning.
For still being here.
It's been very interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my name's Rosemary Anderson. I live at one four five Mount Laurel Avenue in Willacore. I'm here this morning as one of your two delegates to the PAL Library Cooperative. With me, of course, is the familiar Steve who is in charge of our Putnam County Library and is also active in advising the, as do the other directors advising the Board of Directors of the PAL Co-op. Uh, as a reminder, since we only talk to you once a year, the co-op was organized in October of twenty-ten, an inter-local agreement with the Alachua, Levy County and Putnam County entities, since the Alachua County Library System is a separate legal entity. Anyway, our goal is to improve the library service from the Gulf to the St. Johns by adding specifically to the quality and service that's offered to our clients, our end-users in the library. And fund, we are funded entirely by a state grant, three hundred and fifty thousand a year so far, knock on wood if we had some. And our, um, of course, that could vary from year to year. I wanna talk to you today about fiscal year fourteen, which was just concluded a few months ago. And I have some good news, which is always nice.
Yes.
Uh, Putnam County in fiscal fourteen was budgeted for sixty thousand dollars for new books, library materials, videos, et cetera. Actually, because there was some money we could move around, Putnam County got sixty-three thousand dollars in the ability to purchase these materials. These items are spread throughout the system and not clustered just in the main library, so all of our five libraries users benefit. Furthermore, this brings the amount of money that Putnam County has received for books and materials since PAL's founding to two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And I'm happy to report that in fiscal fifteen, which is our current year, we have another sixty thousand dollars allocated for books, books and materials. Personally, I think the most impressive thing that has happened as a part of the PAL, uh, co-op is the number of online services that we've been able to bring to our users. And let me review, in fiscal eleven, PAL funded two online programs, ancestry.com, which everyone knows about, and Learning Express, which, uh, which is and was at that time a leading test preparation or job search engine. The following year, we added Chilton online auto repair manuals, specifically in Putnam and Levy County. The following year, two more were added, Overdrive, which enables our customers to, uh, access electronic books and Xenio, which gives patrons access to thirty-three magazines and journals. And in fiscal fourteen, we added two more, Heritage, which is ancestry research and three more actually, Law Depot and Brain Fuse, a resource for homework. PAL has budgeted, so that means that we have gone from one early on to eight now and we're very happy with that. PAL spends eighty-nine thousand, a hundred and twenty dollars a year for these resources and they are also budgeted for fiscal fifteen, which we're in. Now, let's talk about the summer reading programs. We all agree, I'm sure, that the sooner we can get our youngsters to reading and enjoying reading, the better for them, better for all of us. The trick is, of course, to get kids in and get them to enjoy the reading. And PAL has upped the game by strengthening the appeal of children's programs by paying for performers who travel and do presentations in an entertaining way, obviously, as their performers, so that children become involved. This year, Taiko, a Japanese drummer appeared at all five Putnam County libraries as a part of the Fist Boom and Read theme. And I can't wait to hear what's going to happen this coming summer because the program features superheroes. So, that should be fun and should involve the kids. Finally, I'd like you to know that PAL has put aside a reserve of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in case the legislature finds it not as readily available to allocate the normal three hundred and fifty, so we can not only have this year's money, but we can project into fiscal sixteen and know that many of these programs will continue. It's nice to bring such nice news and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have on the program. Try is the operative word.
Okay. Before we go into a Q and A, uh, does Steve have anything to add?
Steve, well, he has some materials as well.
Summary of what you just heard to make it a little more visual. But PAL is one of the greatest things that we have done and it is one of those things that is progressive looking for Putnam County because it has brought the resources, state resources, taxes that we send to Tallahassee back here into Putnam County, which is always a good thing. And it's also helped us, you know, well, early on, Chip asked us how it would be to be involved with Alachua County being the big elephant in the room. And Alachua County has been very accommodating with us, cooperative and supportive of everything that we do. Um, I don't know exactly what we're gonna bring this summer, but Getty the Gecko has been, uh, bumping around in my mind. We had him here a couple of years ago and if you've never seen Getty the Gecko, he's a six-foot gecko that break dances on his head. Um, so it's
You got it.
It, 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 it's an interesting thing. I, the, lastly, I do wanna promote some of the online resources that PAL brings us. And the one that's really at the top of my mind right now, because we're getting into standardized test time, is Brain Fuse, which is a one-on-one tutoring service that is available to children, students, basically through elementary school, through high school, where they can log on from home and get one-on-one assistance with school problems, with test taking and things like that. And the other one, if any of you are auto car repair people, is the Chilton's Auto Manual, which is available on your tablet, on your smartphone. So, instead of getting oil on our books, you can get oil on your tablets as you're under your car, working on them. But you have those resources right there. But PAL has brought the things that we could never, ever afford here in Putnam County and making us just like those big counties. And that, I think, is the really neat benefit that PAL has brought to all of the residents of Putnam County. And we just really thank you for your vision in making it possible for us to be part of the cooperative.
Thank you so much. This, this cooperative certainly is one that is working and it, it means so much to us that when you can have, um, three counties and everyone is, is working as a team and as partners, it really makes a difference. So, thank you for the, your verbal report, uh, as well as the, um, the presentation that you have, um, here. Again, this is, this is just a, a good presentation about what's working right in our, in our county. Commissioner Lebo?
Um, I just wanted to again ask about the appropriation. Um, does it seem safe and no changes in the horizon? Cause this has worked out.
Third, a third, a third.
Excellent.
The vision of the monies and we anticipate continuing to receive the three hundred and fifty thousand.
Mr. Chair?
As the legislature continues to fund the state aid to libraries program, the money for the cooperatives comes off the top of that program. So, we are assured that money as long as the legislature continues to fund that program.
Okay. And the last question is, uh, this year's read, The Creek is excellent. I've only got about two chapters left and I look forward to our discussion at the Volskic Library, but that was a good pick, very good.
Thank you. We, we, we do our best to reflect the region and the area because those seem to be the books that are most successful.
You would think it took place right here.
Thank you very much.
It's all of north central Florida, for sure. Good pick.
Very cool, thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just wanted to, um, you're thanking us, but really you came forward with the idea and you've both been on it from the be- beginning. And I think, um, our success is, is your success and I just wanna thank you and let's give them a round of applause.
We're always seeking for ways to, uh, promote and, and really push positive things that's happening, uh, in, in our community and in our county. And I think that whatever we need to do to, uh, to promote this, uh, especially with these online programs, um, certainly, uh, let's do that, uh, because it is beneficial in helping our county as well. So, thank you so very much. Uh, item nine on the agenda, Kevin Charbaugh, uh, Putnam Blue Ways and Trails CSO Annual Report. Welcome, Kevin.
Mr. Chair, you, all, everybody, this is the part you bring your cards up. All right, there we go. Okay, hello, how are you today? Uh, good morning, commissioners. Uh, as you said, my name's Kevin Charbaugh. I'm the current, uh, chair of the Putnam Blue Ways and Trails Citizen Support Organization. Our organization has a memorandum of understanding with the county and kind of operate under the umbrella of the Parks and Rec Department and therefore, that gives me the opportunity to come up here once a year, or someone, whoever the chair is for the organization, come up here once a year, give you an annual report, let you know what we're doing and to thank you for the support, uh, that you as the commissioners and the county are giving to our organization. I think there's a piece of the trail out there. Well, it disappeared, I don't know why. I had it up there a second ago. Okay, now that's more interesting than seeing me on the monitor right there. Okay, I think that's a piece of the, uh, trail up there in Keystone. All right. Our, uh, vision statement remains the same, outstanding blue ways and trails for all. Our mission statement is that we are the resource and voice for trail users and function as a steward at, uh, of all Putnam County trails by promoting their acquisition, development, operation, non-motorized use and environmentally sustainable manner. And there's some kayakers, I believe that might even be out on the Oklahoah River right there. Uh, we were started in twenty-eleven, we're now three years old. Uh, at the beginning of the year, this is all dated data at this point, these numbers are higher at this point, but had a hundred and thirteen active memberships, three hundred and eighty-one on our, uh, email list and six hundred and fifty-nine Facebook members. Parks and Recreation has, uh, come into, uh, the ownership of four single kayaks, five double kayaks and a portable ramp, uh, which we were able to use. We continue to be an event-driven organization. In fact, there's a picture of the trailers and the kayaks so that at our events, we can offer these for members of the public who don't necessarily have a kayak of their own, but would like to participate. We continue to be event-driven. We have, uh, monthly events. At this point, we've actually got kind of a, a routine monthly schedule. It goes a little bit like this. Don't feel that you need to write this down, you can go onto our website and see all this and you can also sign up for our weekly trail mail, which comes out on Mondays. But our monthly events, normally the first Saturday, we have what we call a nature stroll. Our second Saturday, we have an equestrian event. Our second Sunday, we have a bike ride. Our third Saturday, we have a kayaking event. Our fourth Saturday, we've now have a four-hour workday. Our, uh, fourth Tuesday, we have a bike and eat event. And of course, we always have our full moon paddle. And if we have an extra Saturday, or as available, we have an, a hiking event. And you say, "Well, a stroll and a hike, what's the difference?" Well, there is a difference.
Right.
Distance and speed are the differences. So, uh, we have a, a nature stroll's normally about two to three miles and it's more of an interpretive kind of walk. Uh, then there were some people saying, "Wow, you guys aren't really hiking." Then there are some people saying, wow, you guys aren't really hiking. So, we decided to take them out to Ednaia Creek in January and did the seven miles out to the overlook and everything, and they had a great time. So, we're starting to do some longer hikes as well. So, those are our, our, our monthly events that we're doing at this time. This last year, 2014, we had seventeen cycling, monthly cycling events, serviced a hundred-and-sixty cyclists. Here's some of our cyclists on the trail. We had nine hiking events. These are actually strolls, but we ended up having a hundred hikers for those events. Here we are out along the greenway. We had twenty-one monthly paddling events with a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-five paddlers participating. This is, again, this is actually the Oklahua, just the turn of the year. And so, we had about five-hundred-and-fifty-five people that we track that we serviced with these monthly events. We also have special events since we started the workdays, and I think it was April. We had seven workdays, plus we participated in the coastal cleanup with Keep Putnam Beautiful. We had seventy-two volunteers show up for those workdays. We are picking up the urban trail. We are working with the county kayaks, clearing one of the landings in Willaca State Forest. With the coastal cleanup, we had people show up in their kayaks to assist the marsha with Keep Putnam Beautiful, going around, collecting those things out of the waterway that we really don't want to have there. So, we also, as Elizabeth explained, we work with the Iron Horse, and Chris Rhodat's when he comes through. Last year, we had ten people working out there at the aid station. That's kind of what it looked like with some Christmas tree lights. This year, we had about eighteen people participated and helped with our aid station. We had a professional sound system playing disco music all night. We had a disco ball going. We had a whole bunch of Christmas lights all over the place. In fact, Chris sent me an email that I got this morning. He said, I can honestly say that you guys had the best aid station I have ever seen. I wish all the volunteers could have come out to see it. So, and as Elizabeth pointed out, we had a hundred-and-forty-eight runners from, they were international-based, they were all over. This is the tenth year that he's been here. Some of the other things we assisted with, or had, we had a wildflower presentation, to which seventeen people showed up for our wildflower presentation. We had a presentation on local birds by Carol Foyle. She's a local member of the Audubon Society. She does a lot of bird counts and is very knowledgeable. Had twenty-six people show up for that event at the Edgar Johnson Senior Center. We also hosted a kayak camp for young people out of Pomona Park this last summer that was put on by Mr. Joe Carter and assisted by Sam Carr. You'll see, we had eight kids participate. Here's some of the younger ones. The culmination of their training, it was a multi-week training, and the final week, we actually had an event where we were going from John's Landing in Willaca State Forest around to Mud Springs, and we decided to make it an intergenerational event. We had the children, for their graduation paddle, do that paddle, and so it was very exciting for them to discover Mud Springs up there in Willaca State Forest. Here's some more of the children that are down there in Lake Broward, which is a great place for learning how to kayak. There they are with their certificate. All right, we also worked with Willaca State Forest. They wanted to have a Fall Forest Festival. It was their first ever, and so we showed up, and they said, oh, thank you, please help us out. And we did two, we offered two hikes, four kayak trips, and two off-road bike trips. Here's some of the hiking. I mean, this is beautiful. If, if people in the audience or members at home seeing this have never been down and just taken a walk through Willaca State Forest, I mean, this is, this is our resource right there. That is just absolutely gorgeous. Some people on their bikes, kayaking to Mud Springs. And of course, we gave you a interim report back in, I believe, the end of October, beginning of November regarding our paddler's rendezvous, which was a smashing success, I would say. We had a hundred-and-fifty participants, and we had sixty-five volunteers work on that for day. Maybe I'm just setting things up here on the podium, and that's what's causing the problem for the computer. Are we back? Are we live? All right, this is definitely picture-driven, that's what you like to see, but, and, and that really breaks it down to, to the reality is that we are a volunteer organization, and we are people who show up. And in fact, I know that we have a number of members here in the audience and maybe even up on the board, and if, if our members would just stand who are in attendance, who would like to stand and be acknowledged, and I thank you all very much for everything that you do for this community. And I, I certainly do appreciate all the hard work that they put in. So, here's what all we had at the rendezvous, a hundred-and-fifty participants, sixty-five volunteers, a lot of stuff. It was, it was a great time. Here are our paddle leaders going through safety training for the event. Special kudos go out to Sam Carr. This is what Ednaia Creek looked like prior to the, the week prior to the event, and we had one of the paddles was going up there to a landing. And so, here's Mr., Mr. Sam Carr, laid out with a chainsaw in order to clear at least a little path so that people could come here. Here's a picture of people down in Willaca State Forest for the rendezvous, and each of the different trips. Had a trip leader who would gather his folks, and then they'd marshal them out, like going off the parade grounds. And down there in Willaca, people out on the water. And there, that's what I like to see, is people from other places coming here to spend money in our business establishments. We began tracking our volunteer hours back in April. Prior to that, we'd just show up and we didn't really think about it. So, we began tracking our volunteer hours in April, and we have documented one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty hours last year of volunteer hours. Those are the ones that were documented. I'm sure there are others, but that's the equivalent of forty-seven weeks of a full-time job, putting on these, these events for people to come and participate in. The other things we have going on, we have our, our Facebook page, and on Facebook, we, it's a very active Facebook page. You end up seeing people do pickup rides from there, and also, we advertise, you know, the upcoming events that are happening. So, here's one of our bike rides, off-road rides. We end up with people who not only want to kayak in Putnam County, but say, hey, I'm going to go over to Salt Springs or something, anybody want to join? And you end up with a group of people from Putnam County going to the neighboring watersheds. Our marketing tools, I have to thank Gay Esperson for her significant contribution to our organization with her technical skills dealing with the internet and with the webpage and Facebook, et cetera. So, here's what our website looks like on our front page, and there's all kinds of stuff up there. We can log our volunteer hours through the internet site. It's very simple. You'll see on the right-hand side the upcoming events. It always shows the next four or five upcoming events so that people can be made aware of them, put it on their calendar. Our 2014 Annual Report in full is actually up on this website. You can go and check it out if you'd like. Gay also puts out the Trail Mail. As I mentioned earlier, it comes out every Monday. She basically sends it out to anybody on our email list, and you get the next, I believe it's five events, upcoming events are identified there. Brief little blurb tells you how to communicate with us. That's kind of what it looks like there as you get your email. We have a brochure with a physical application. If you don't want to join through the website, you can fill out an actual brochure application. And membership cards, this is kind of an exciting thing. We have sponsors on our membership cards, so if you join as a member, you get a membership card, and they give you a discount. These are all local businesses. Magnolia Cafe, Beef O'Brady's, Pizza Boys, Putnam Bicycles, Muscle White's, Three Bananas, Backwood Smokehouse, Tangle Oaks Vineyards, and Floor Home Station. Now, the membership cards for 2015 have not arrived to your hands yet, and there's a reason, because we have added to this list of sponsors two new downtown businesses, Life's a Stitch and City Cafe, as well as Poppy's in Interlochen, as well as La Hacienda Three, which is right across the parking lot here, as well as Water's Edge at Anderson's Lodge, Shrimp R Us, and Hermits Cove. Can't forget Hermits Cove, got to be on there. So, as soon as the membership cards are printed, they will be going out to all of our members, and those who would like one, it's really easy, ten-dollar membership for the year. We've also put together a number of, this is definitely under Linda Kreider, put together a number of bicycle maps, and those are available both in physical form as well as online, and will be used in the upcoming Placa Bicycle Festival. Our goals for 2014, we had a goal of becoming a 501(c)(3). We've accomplished that. We're recognized now as a 501(c)(3). So, if anybody wants to donate anything to us, we'd be happy to accept it and give you a tax write-off, just putting that out there. Establish and maintain relationships with other entities. The, the full report has them all listed. I don't need to bother you with them now, but we are connected in with twenty-four agencies that deal with Blue Ways and Trails in Putnam County. Creating a marketing and promotional plan, as I mentioned earlier, there's all of our outreach kind of information that we've dealt with. To go forth, so we ensure established trails and facilities are safely operated and maintained. We have a contact for all the different sections of trails in Putnam County and who's responsible for them. Also, we have our monthly workday, and what I like to try to do is schedule it so that it rotates around. We'll work with the city on a project, we'll work with the county on a project, we'll work with the state forest on a project, we'll work with a park on a project. And the projects themselves can be bicycling or kayaking or hiking trails, so we try to move it all around so all the different interest groups get their fair share. Also, our goal is to increase membership and retention. I think we've doubled our membership in the last year. We're now maintaining a membership database as our membership continues to grow. Also, our goal is to fundraise. We successfully applied for a tourist development grant for two-thousand dollars assistance with the rendezvous, and we actually used a thousand dollars of the grant money, so I'd like to thank them for that, that assistance. Okay, wrapping it up, the urban trail. This is a direct thank you to the members on the commission right here, as well as the county manager. This was a, an issue where this little link of the urban trail was incomplete, and we brought it to your attention last year, and that's what it looks like today. It has now been acquired and completed, and along with a Rails to Trails Conservancy, which also assisted, I understand, with some funding. But I really am appreciative to, to the county for working to ensure that this section of the trail was completed. And I'm pretty happy that this is happening out in East Placa. I live down out of East Placa, end of East River Road, so it's delightful when I'm driving to or from work, and I look over and I see that they're working on the Rails to Trail that will connect from where it is right now, racetrack, all the way out to the Putnam County line in Hastings. I think that's a great, a great thing, and I think we're actually a couple of years ahead of the scheduled completion of this because we were ready for it, and when the funding became available, we were ready. So, coming up, coming up soon, in 2015, we're going to continue to sponsor events such as we did in 2014. We, as Elizabeth said, we just, this last weekend, had the Iron Horse 2015, and I, I appreciate what Commissioner Flag said about, you know, we're all very busy and we can only be in one place at one time, and one commissioner is the same as five or whatever. I got to tell you, at three o'clock in the morning at the aid station, I'm willing to bet you're not at another function. Well, yes. You're doing something, okay, but it's not at other function for the county. So, you know, I'm just saying, there's definitely an opening spot on the calendar for you, and there's slots available now. Sign up, sign up now, right? We're also going to, we're co-sponsoring the Placa Bicycle Festival. It's coming up soon. Bartram Conference is going to be happening in October. We're involved with that as well, helping be an outfitter for them in some of their events. Bike Florida is also going to be through the county. We're going to help them. And Paddle Florida is coming in in December. They're supposed to have about fifty people, take five days to, to traverse the St. Johns River through Putnam County. And we are also, at this time, kind of formalizing a relationship with the Bartram Committee so that we can assist them. And I believe that is my final slide, and the only other thing I'd say is, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, but it's, it's very rewarding work. And when I'm out there in an environment like this, and I look around, and not only do I see all of this nature, but I see these other people out there enjoying it, that's what makes it worth it. And so, I appreciate the support of the county in allowing us to provide these opportunities. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you again for such a comprehensive report, and it's very exciting to see this kind of activity going on that we're able to host. So, thank you all for your leadership and all that you're doing to promote Putnam. Okay? Item ten.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
I'm not, as a resident of Putnam County, I'm asking these questions. Would it be possible that the Trails Committee could look at the possibility of promoting some opportunities for those that are either mobility-challenged or sight and hearing-challenged? Certainly, these wouldn't be long events, but my guess is that those folks, if they had an opportunity with a little help, would like to be on a trail of some type. I know in my case, I have difficulties walking long distances, but I do have a little scooter that I can pull out of the back of my van, and, but you see these signs that says no motorized vehicles on the trails, so. And I'm sure they don't, but some people might see those and say, I can't bring my electric wheelchair, or I can't bring something, but if there's some way to promote that, those folks an opportunity to come out and participate. And then, secondly, as it, as I look at the construction of the trail in East Palatka, the section between racetrack and East River Road, and I've noticed this over years living there, that every one of those side roads, the bus stops every morning and picks up a huge number of children. And I know that this trail is going to be used by not only folks that are riding a bike, but people that walk in East Palatka, because I've often thought what we need is some sidewalks. But the problem is in Putnam County, on that section of Putnam County Boulevard, on each side is a fairly deep ditch. So, the only way that the residents can get across Putnam County Boulevard to the trail is to walk through a ditch, and it might be an opportunity while this construction's going on, at least in a couple of spots, just to pave a little section to the road so that they can get to the trail, and then they got a seven-mile trail they can be on and not be in the traffic. So, I just have been observing that, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
And I think we have some members of our group that are actually on the Working Trails Committee, and I think that's a great observations and ideas to bring to that group.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That's, that's very, very much on point. And so, also, our engineers can.
I'll get in line.
Yeah. Sounds good. Can look at that, but thanks again so very much. Alrighty. Mr. Sam Carr, Dunn's Creek State Park status. Thank you so much for being with us as well, while it's still morning.
Yes, thank you for, for having me. I, I, I hope that everyone got a letter that the Dunn's Creek, Friends of Dunn's Creek sent to Representative Van Zan, and really, that's, I wanted to follow up on that today's meeting. And the letter is, is explanatory about where all the funding and so forth is and all. Dunn's Creek State Park has been a state park since two thousand and one and, and so forth, and it's been an asset for the county, and we've been really patient and waiting for all these years to get this park open. And now, with the Amendment One funds hitting the state, it's time for us to get noisy and let them know that we want some of that money come back here in Putnam County. So, that's, I wanted to be sure that the, that everyone on the council knows about Dunn's Creek State Park. I know several of you have been out there, but there's a couple that I'm not sure you're familiar with our area, and I'd love to give you a personal tour of it because it's sixty-two-hundred acres of just wonderful, wonderful Putnam County. Two thousand, the land was purchased by the state from Nature Conservancy. In two thousand and one, it was leased to the Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Park Service, basically. And in two thousand and three, the Friends of Dunn's Creek Parks, the CSO, was established. In two thousand and four, a management plan was developed for the park, all part of the process of getting this to be a full-service park. And in two thousand and twelve, the department published the actual two thousand and twelve master plan. This has all of the lands, and you've got several copies of, of the pages out of this in your packet that I handed out to you. Currently, the park is working with the county on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar road project that will label, that will enable daily process, daily access. This has been going on for over a year now, and it's a problem basically between the contract writers in Tallahassee didn't like the way we tried to do it last year, and so they sent it back, and we're trying to renegotiate that with the county, and we're close to having that done, from what I understand. So, hopefully, next meeting, you'll be approving the process, let the county begin work on our, on our access road through Dunn's Creek State Park, which will give us able to have daily access. access to the park. Right now, the only park that's available on a daily basis is what we call the Blue Pond Walk-In Area and that's only about 10 acres of property versus the 6,200 that's in there. And in January 2015, I sent the letter to Representative Van Zandt requesting the funding and we've also sent that up to Florida Park Service. Who I represent is the Friends of Dunn's Creek State Park C S O. It's a ten-member board. With the members of the board, stand up and, yeah, these are all members of our current board and I'm very, very fortunate to have these guys on this board. We have 97 current paid members and we run about a $6,000 a year annual budget. Friends of Dunn's Creek State Park is a nonprofit corporation functioning as a citizen support organization for the benefit of Dunn's Creek State Park. So, everything we do goes out there. What is Dunn's Creek State Park? 6,300 acres, over 60 miles of trails, there's 23 natural communities out there featuring sand hills, mesic flatwoods and floodplain swamps. There's five miles of Dunn's Creek are part of the Dunn's Creek State Park. There's a shell mound at Piney Bluff, we have ravines, creeks, depression ponds and sinkhole lake. We have a gopher tortoise form out there now with over 25 residents that have been bused in from around the area and Florida deer, bald eagles, black bear, shirmins, fox squirrels, gopher tortoise, sandhill cranes and especially Etna rosemary are residents out there. These are just pictures of those. Upper right-hand corner is your very rare gopher frog that lives in gopher holes. Believe it or not, we caught him one day. This is a picture of the protected Etna rosemary, only exists in Putnam County. One head of it is out at Dunn's Creek State Park, the other head is out at Etna State Forest, the only place that that plant exists. It's really amazing. So, this is what it looks like when we're down on Dunn's Creek, on the bank of Dunn's Creek and public has access to Dunn's Creek State Park from Dunn's Creek. This is the Blue Pond Walk-In Area. This is what most of the park looks like, almost half of the area are flatwoods and piney flatwoods, but there's also some beautiful oak hammocks in there that are just gorgeous. This is a rendition of the actual natural communities in the Dunn's Creek State Park. There are more natural communities in Dunn's Creek State Park than any other state park in Florida, which is amazing. The diversity is amazing. The Friends of Dunn's Creek participate in workdays, we have our special events, we do nature tours, we have equestrian trails that are very popular. Obviously, kayaking on Dunn's Creek is near and dear to my heart and hiking trails with rare natural plants are really amazing. And we have mountain bike trails that are out there, world-class campfires and when we have our open houses, we have guided tours and the guy there, big guy on the right side is Don Forzio and he's the head of Florida Park Service for the state. So, he has been out in April to visit with us and is very much a supporter of this. This is what it looks like when we got a full house. That is over 65 trailers and cars and so forth out at one of our full houses. So, April the 17th and 18th and 19th of 2015, the 18th is the main day. We're going to make this, we're going to have our spring festival, it's going to be Putnam County's Earth Day Celebration. We have free booths, exhibits and demonstrations for all nature-based organizations. We're going to join forces to promote Putnam County's natural beauty and you're a special advocate and meet with us and enjoy our nature. So, come see us. And that's, I just wanted you all to be aware of what Dunn's Creek State Park is and all of that and every time you're talking to anybody with a park service or whatever, please ask them to open our park. It's time, it's been 10 years and frankly, the volunteer base and so forth, you know, it's getting a little long in the tooth at this point in time. So, we need to get this open. What an economic benefit it would be to Putnam County to have all those camping sites. You know, the revenue that we realize out of the campsites down at Rodman Campground would be doubled, right, with Dunn's Creek Campground and the state has got the plan and all they're really waiting for now is allocation of the funds and so the funds now will be coming in and I need for you all to be on board to get this thing done, okay? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you again so much for that status and report. Lot of enthusiasm and lot of excitement and I'm just grateful for the leadership of both of these organizations there because your leadership team speaks volumes about what's really happening and why it's happening there. So, thank you so much for your contributions. Item 11, Code Enforcement, John Salmon. He has request for abatement, case number 2011-0948, 210 Wilson Avenue in Tullarkin.
This is a case that was first seen on December 5th, 2011. We were called out there by the sheriff's office, it's a crystal meth property. As you can see, I guess I can't go back, but there's significant issues with this. I've got more pictures on here than I gave you. I went out there yesterday to get some better photographs of the issues, the roof was leaking, the floors are in bad shape, walls are in bad shape, there's holes right through the Basically, went to the special magistrate on July 19th, he found the property in violation. The owners really never did anything. We went to the special magistrate on September 19, 2013 and he recommended we proceed with abatement and foreclosure and that's what we're here to do today.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. Is the owner of the 210 Wilson Avenue property here prepared to speak? Any neighbors prepared to speak? Commissioners?
Thank you for the later photographs. I was wondering about the interior, if we could sell the structure to offset our demolition cost, but that sounds, seems out of the question now.
Is crystal meth stuff, I guess they did the decontamination and all of that stuff when they made their case or is it still contaminated?
Not that I'm aware of, that we try to get that done if they're going to rehab that structure, but the owner here just walked away from it, so it's a bad situation out there and we need to get rid of it.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, we have a request for abatement. What is your pleasure?
I move with staff recommendations, Mr. Chair.
Have a proper motion and a second that this abatement be processed as presented. Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, fine reduction request, case number 2012-0023-439, East Bannerville Road, Placca.
This is, the property was first seen on February 8th, 2012. There was an unpermitted rear addition, which is on the screen right now, and a swimming pool on the property, notice of violation hearing was sent out. The owner and her son came in and got paperwork for a building permit and said the pool would be removed. No permits were ever pulled and the pool remained on the property. Went to the special magistrate on May 17, 2012. He gave the owner until September 14, 2012 to bring the property into compliance or a $25 a day fine would start, $100 administrative, he was also charged. Rein inspection on July 11, 2012 showed the pool was removed, but the addition was still there and there were no permits. That continued that way until I went back to the special magistrate on November 21st, 2013. The owner was present there. The special magistrate ordered an administrative fine and lien to be recorded, but gave the owner until January 1, 2014 to come into compliance. If in compliance by that date, the lien would not be recorded. She did not get it done. The permit was ultimately filed on December 14, 2014 and she requested a fine reduction hearing. We took the case before the special magistrate on January 15, 2015. The owner was not present. Special magistrate has recommended that the fine be reduced from $14,950 plus $100 administrative fine to be reduced to $1,053 of the cost of processing the case plus $1,000 of the additional fines for a total of $2,053 if it's paid within 90 days of board action. Reasons for that is the lack of contact with Ms. Daniels for several months and she really gave no reason for the, why there was a delay, so. Any question by the board?
Thank you so very much. Sir, is Ms. Daniels or anyone representing Ms. Daniels here? Please come forward, state your name and address. Will we have you address for the record? Like to hear from you. Thank you for being with us.
Yes, sir. I would appreciate very much...
Are you Ms. Hazel A. Daniels?
I'm Hazel D. Daniels.
All right, yes, ma'am.
And I'm here to ask if there's any way you can possibly drop this fine or reduce it some. I would appreciate it. I know you all worked hard with me on this and it's, I've had to tear it completely down and redo it all over and it's been very expensive.
Okay, do you understand everything that led up to you having to be here today?
Yes, sir.
Are you pretty clear on...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you also understand that your fine originally was much higher than what it is now?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Was there any information that you could share with us as to what was going on or what was not going on during that interim period?
Actually, the home belonged to my brother and he deceased and I paid the house off. To start the whole thing off, there was a little small porch on the back and I didn't think I had to get a permit to close that porch in. Well, when I did, that's whenever thing started and then my ex-daughter-in-law, she called and she told them I didn't have a permit. So, well, by this time, people are, you know, coming out and inspecting. So, after all this, I went by everything that they told me to do. Like I say, it was built and then it was completely tore down and then I had to rebuild it again and I learned my lesson. I don't care what it is, you need a permit and I'm more than willing to pay what you've asked me to pay if I can do this.
Okay, so what has been recommended today is a reduction of the fine from the $14,950 to $1,053, which is cost of processing the case, plus 1,000 additional fines for a total of $2,053 and, you know, to be paid in 90 days there. So, what are you telling us as it relates to this recommendation?
I'm willing to do that.
Okay, all right. Well, again, all of us have various things that come up that we didn't initiate or didn't have anything to do with, but obviously, you are the responsible person. Certainly, our condolences are with you concerning your brother and you inheriting a situation that you just didn't know all the details on. However, the time lapse and the amount of cost to, you know, that's involved in our staff trying to get involuntary compliance, sometimes, again, various people who know various things are not in the right place at the right time and, but we still have to enforce the law. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Just one if I could. If you could, again, Ms. Daniels, explain, the property was in your name or out of your name when this violations took place?
No, it was in my name. The property was in my brother and my name.
So, it was dual ownership?
Yes, sir.
It was dual, two of you owned it at the time and then as this, these proceedings went on, was it fair to say that he was responsible for the construction, the brother?
No, sir, my brother had passed away and I went out there and I was trying to fix the place up.
I see, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, so during this season where there was no contact, you had been notified that there were issues, but you, for whatever reason, were preoccupied and just didn't communicate back to the county or what was happening?
Well, I didn't know exactly what they wanted me to do, so finally, I came down to the office over here, I guess down the street here.
So, but you knew there were issues, but you just...
I didn't know what to do with them.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, certainly, you can't ignore those kind of things, but, I mean, you've admitted that you've learned a lesson and again, we're certainly not trying to be punitive in any way, shape, form or fashion, but we do have to, you know, be in compliance with our regulations and then we also have to be mindful of setting precedents. I think that the recommendation certainly is a very fair recommendation and I'd like for the commission to give us some guidance to a motion.
Mr. Chairman, so move approval of a staff recommendation of a fine of $2,053.
We have, with the condition of 90 days?
With the condition of 90 days, yes.
Have a proper motion, second?
Second.
Second, further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, hearing none. Hopefully, you'll be able to get this behind you and we all can be better.
And where do I pay this at?
Talk with this gentleman after, he'll be, they'll connect with you. But thank you so much for your cooperation and also for bringing it into compliance. Thank you and God bless.
Put him over to Mr. Burns-Catal.
Okay, we will continue moving forward now under the Planning and Development Services. These are public hearings there and Mr. Burns-Catal is here. Are there representatives from the, is that Shaw's?
Yes.
Shaw's case, R-14-007 zoning map amendment, are there individuals that will be speaking? Please come forward so that you will be closer. We want to make sure that everyone that is testifying or bringing information concerning the case is properly registered. If you'll just state your name and address for the record and then if you were talking, then we'll already have it.
I'm Smokey Shouse from 415 Sleepy Hollow Drive.
All right, Mr. Shouse? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Virginia Shouse, 415 Sleepy Hollow Drive.
Y'all must be related. Thank you very kindly.
Yeah, for the last 32 years.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you for being here. All right, Mr. Harris-Burns-Catal will present this case. Just, again, if you can take the front row seat for just a moment, we'll call you at an appropriate time, just wanted to make sure.
Harris-Burns-Catal Plan Development Services, this is R-14-007. The applicant is Virginia Shaw and you've met them before. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from R2 to Ag. The applicant would like to keep residential livestock on their property. Rezoning application is pursuant to Code's case 2014-00749, keeping of horses and R2 zoning. While horses are allowed in R2 zoning with special use permit, the property is not large enough to be eligible for a special use permit. Rezoning these properties from R2 to Ag will allow the owner to possess one horse per one acre. The rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and brings the applicant into code compliance. Staff recommends approval for this rezoning. I'd like to show you a couple maps. And here's the aerial, we have two subject parcels that are associated with this and then you can see that there is an Ag zoning district currently to the east of the property and is largely in an A2 future land use with conservation to the east. If there are any questions for staff?
Okay, thank you very kindly. Just before you get to questions, I want to ask the applicants, do you agree with this recommendation or disagree?
Agree.
Okay, just want to make sure. Commissioner Ligo?
If I could, Mr. Harris, the total acreage of the property?
Is 1.85.
Okay, let me ask the question, has there been any ex parte communications from District One?
No.
District Two?
None.
District Four?
Yes, sir, last night, we spoke at the Rodman meeting about this and I just welcomed him here today.
Okay, so the we is the applicants and yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. District Five?
The same as District Four.
Okay, and District Three, there has been none. Is there anything that has been discussed that would cause you not to make a fair decision?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very kindly. Okay, are there any other commissioner comments? Council, can we move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Open public hearing, yes.
All right, this public hearing is now open. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak concerning the case that is before Public hearing is now hereby closed. Commissioners, you've heard the case, you see the recommendation, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make, I recommend approval of staff recommendations in this case.
Have a proper motion, is there a second?
A second.
Have a second. Further discussion? Time to consider, District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all for being here. Item twelve B, R-14-009, Jeffrey Bodden and Gator Timber, zoning map amendment from C1 and A to C4.
Mr. Bodden is here.
Who's here?
Mr. Bodden is here and I believe another gentleman is here also.
And Mr. Kelly Smith. Will you all come forward, please, and introduce yourselves? Thank you for being here. This one gentleman looked familiar, can you?
Good morning, I'm Kelly Smith, owner of Gator Timberland Land.
Okay, thank you so much.
Jeff Bodden.
Okay, welcome to both of you all. You can certainly sit close and we will be calling on you in just a moment. Thank you.
Let me get to the right thing here. This is a request as Commissioner Flag indicated that his own property at fifteen twenty-six, twenty-eight North Highway seventeen Palacca from C1 and A to C4. Mr. Bodden came into our office approximately a year ago and discussed plans for combining one of his lots plus the furniture of the second lot and applying for rezoning with his neighbor, Gator Timber. Staff gave him advice on the proposal and suggested letting him get a lot split, which he did. We received a survey with the lot split on August eleventh and approved the lot split on September eighth. Mr. Bodden came in with the rezoning application on December sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. The case went before the Planning Commission on January fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, and they recommended that the property be rezoned from C1 and A to C4. And there was no one at the public hearing opposed to it. This is a map of the zoning of the case. This is a map of the future land use. As you know from the past, that we've put some other intensive zoning on Highway seventeen North because that's the corridor where the railroad and everything is and it's close to the airport and close to Jackson, closer to Jacksonville. So, that's kind of where we're headed. Any questions by the board?
Not yet. I'd like to ask the applicants whether or not they agree or disagree with the recommendation that we do have before us. Y'all are in agreement, thank you very kindly. We will now open the public hearing. Are there any citizens here to speak concerning the specific case, R-14-009, fifteen twenty-six, fifteen twenty-eight, North Highway seventeen Palacca? Your inactivity indicates that there is none. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, have you had any ex parte communications on this case? District One?
I've had none.
District Two?
None.
District Four?
None.
District Five?
None.
District Three, none. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Proper motion and a second that this zoning map amendment be approved and authorized as presented. Any further discussion? District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Three? Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Item thirteen on the agenda, Better Place Plan Discussion, Extension Discussion. And I'm going to ask our county administrator, Mr. Rick Leary, to give us some opening statements on this. Certainly, today's discussion is not an action for today, but it is an opportunity for the commission to decide whether or not we need to proceed in any specific direction. Mr. Leary?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in nineteen, back in two thousand and two, the voters approved the Better Place Plan, which was implemented in January first of two thousand and three. The one cent infrastructure surtax was begun to be collected at that time. It has been collected since, ever since, and has yielded up through two thousand, December of two thousand and fourteen, sixty-one million dollars to the county, which has been used exclusively for capital outlay projects. The county has used that for a variety of different capital outlay things. Most notably, it has used it for transportation improvement projects in the form of resurfacing existing paved roads and turning dirt roads to pavement. Approximately eighty miles, eighty to eighty-five miles of dirt roads have been turned to pavement. Approximately one hundred and fifty to one hundred and sixty miles of existing paved roads have been resurfaced. There are plans in the works, of course, to continue both of those types of projects in the next couple of years while this funding authorization is still in existence. We have, the county has also utilized these funds for improvements to an expansion of senior citizen, senior centers, recreation facilities, some drainage programs, emergency operations center, emergency communications to help our law enforcement and public safety departments, water system, library and health facilities. And at some point, since this has been such a tremendous benefit to the county, allowing it to undertake projects that would not otherwise have been possible, the county may wish to consider an authorization to extend and continue the Better Place Plan, which would necessitate at some point the, a public hearing and a adoption of an ordinance authorizing the placing of this issue on the ballot for the voters to consider the continuation of the Better Place Plan. We thought it might be an appropriate time for this discussion to be initiated, to continue the, to continue the extension of the Better Place Plan since it has been such a benefit to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. While the Better Place Plan is widely known for what it has done by a lot of individuals, whether it's specific entities in various ends of our county, elected officials, appointed officials, and specific individuals that are active in local government seem to just really have, to me, a greater level of appreciation for what has happened. But since it has been a full decade of, you know, just above a decade of what I call income and revenue and expenditures here, I think that in order for us to move forward, Mr. Leary, that we need the most comprehensive accountability, per se, or at least itemization of these activities. And I think if it's in some type of a chronological order and say pretty much the expenses per year and what those events were, that if we could really get something along those lines back in our next meeting, perhaps that will give us an opportunity. And I want to hear from the commissioners. I do have one public speaker that wants to talk with us about this item. But I believe that the Better Place Plan only God up above knows what kind of condition our county would be in without this. But I just want to make sure that all of our citizens can appreciate on the level that most of us appreciate what has transpired through this particular plan. Yes, sir.
Well, at your next meeting, the chairman of the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee will be presenting to you his report that takes place on an annual basis as that Oversight Committee brings to you its report indicating that it has reviewed all of the projects that have been undertaken in the previous year to ascertain whether or not those projects have been completed in accordance with the ordinance that was adopted back in two thousand and two. And of course, at each of those quarterly meetings of the Oversight Committee, Mr. Anderson, the Budget Officer, presents to them a detailed chronological accounting of not only the revenues received, but of each project expenditure that was made. So, that that you're speaking of in terms of an exact accounting of every project and the amount of money spent on each of those individual projects is already in the queue and has and is presented and reviewed and is available for review at each and every quarterly meeting of the Better Place Oversight Committee.
Very good. And also, again, and I'm not sure exactly how the chairman of the Better Place Plan is planning on presenting, but I certainly, as one of us, can appreciate if there were visual and not just a handout there. I mean, it's two weeks to put it together, but it would certainly make a difference not only for us, but for our citizens because oftentimes, again, we have institutional knowledge of these things and we feel good about certain things because we know so much more. But if we can ensure that whatever support staff needs to provide, to make sure that there's some visuals to go along with the conversation, it would be nice. One other thing, Mr. Leary?
Well, I was gonna say, certainly, we can make sure there's some PowerPoint available for that. And also, I think it's, we need to note that each of the municipalities and the counties share in the Better Place Plan proceeds as well. And each of them have undertaken their own individual projects within their municipalities.
I certainly hope that they can also come, be invited and not just read by default that we're discussing this so that they will also be able to supplement conversation and give additional information that would be for the benefit of the entire community. Because, again, this is not a district situation. This is making our entire county better and more progressively forward. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I was here in two thousand and two when we put together the idea of the Better Place Plan. And we found that we've got enough money from the taxes just to run the business of the county the same old way. But we knew that if we were gonna succeed, that we needed to do something different and we needed funds to do that with. So, we held visioning sessions throughout Putnam County, seventeen of them to be exact. We went to each community and we said, if you could make Putnam County a better place, what would be important to you to have or what would you like to see? And for each of those areas, we took votes from people that came. We took all of the suggestions and we put together something called the Better Place Plan. And one thing that we wanted to do when we put it together is we wanted to limit what we could do with that money to what was on the list. And we wanted to be sure that we had an Oversight Committee to be sure that we did just that. We didn't want the money to go like the lottery tickets to Tallahassee and then the money got used for other things. So, we set up the Better Place Plan Committee. They have met quarterly since two thousand and two. And they have looked at each project that we've done, made sure that it was appropriate on the list and that funds had not been taken from the Better Place Plan and just put into the general fund. So, I would say that the Better Place Plan is one of our better success stories, that we've been able to do so much. And I really look forward to showing everyone the projects that we've done and review some of them ourselves at our next meeting. But I could not be more pleased. There's so much we couldn't, could not have done had we not put this together. And it is truly a work of the citizens of the county. They voted to do this, to make their lives better and to make Putnam County a better place. So, I hope that they would want to do the same thing so that in the future, we'll be able to do more things and have the successes that we've had.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Harris. Before the other commissioners chime in, I'd like for Ms. Diane Williams to come and share with us our, Ms. Diane Williams? Ms. Diane Williams?
Diane Williams had to leave.
Okay.
So, she wrote down her question for me to read to you.
Okay.
She wants you to please put it back on the ballot for the people of Putnam County to decide. Then she wants to know where all the money was going, the whole sixty-one million. I believe you've discussed that, so I can call her tonight and tell her you're gonna put it out in writing or something where all this sixty-one million went to?
Million.
Well, two things. Both of her concerns are not optional, okay? The accountability is going to happen and the ballot, we can't just do that. So, it's not going to happen like that. But in the next meeting, when the chairman comes and other representatives throughout the county will come, so tell her she didn't miss one single thing out there. All we're doing is deliberating there. And if this commission is progressive thinking, then in the next meeting, we will have the accountability and perhaps a proposed date if this commission is in agreement with when it'll be on the ballot. But both of those things will happen.
Okay, I'll call her and tell her I was just a messenger.
Call her now. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Lible?
You can ditto Commissioner Harris. I was there as a volunteer in those years. And what's been really pleasing to me is being a regional partner with other rural counties over the last, those years. And when we share our experiences at county or deficiencies and successes, they always ask about that. How did you get that done? Because we are, out of all those sixteen rural counties, we're the biggest. You know, we're the big guys in the room. And I really put a lot of that success and status on the Better Place Plan, no doubt about it.
So, we're the biggest? Biggest, smallest county.
We are.
All right.
We are. We go in, they actually like ask us questions, how we do this and that, and the Better Place Plan always comes up.
Well, I certainly was serving as mayor of the city of Palacca at that time. And it's just, it's phenomenal that our citizens, after going through the seasons of saying, nah, we don't think this is good. I think the way it was presented, the overall benefits there, and I think we have a story to tell. And I think it's all going to hinge on how well we tell of the story, which is, again, not a made-up story, it's the facts. It's the facts that we have over this past decade. District Five?
Definitely a tip of the hat to Commissioner Harris and her fellow board members at that time because as you said, God only knows where we would be without that. It is definitely a, just, I don't know what Putnam County would shape, we'd be in if we didn't have that extra money to do the things and move our county forward and keep improving things that we get criticized so badly about from surrounding counties and trying to make our home a prettier and nicer place to entice people to want to move and live here. So, I think it's a great thing. I have nothing but thumbs up for it.
Thank you so much. District Four?
Mr. Chairman, I served for years on the Better Place Plan here for Putnam County, two years as chairman and also for the town of Interlock and as the chairman of the Better Place Plan. Commissioner Harris, I remember those visioning meetings and it was exciting to see what was gonna take place. And I'm really excited about the future of Putnam County and trying to get this renewed and accountability, transparency. I think we do have a great story to tell and I can't wait to start telling it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very kindly. I'd like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing date and consideration of an ordinance for the twenty-fourth of February, two thousand and fifteen.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a proper motion and a second. Further discussion?
I didn't get the date on that, Mr. Chairman.
That's two weeks from today.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Are we technically correct, counsel, administrator? Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a special request.
We have a special request by Commissioner Lible. Everybody, please tune in.
I want to mix the agenda up a little bit if I can. I have, I've been asked to speak today at Quanus Club. And I was to be there at eleven-thirty and keeping with those wishes, I would like to be able to do that. But I have a resolution supporting the preservation of Robin Reservoir that we've done many of, but it's been tweaked, rewritten. And my proposal is to send this out to our supporting counties and municipalities that agree with us and also share in the economic downfall, both positively, nothing but positively, of the Robin Reservoir and the fishing industry and the revenues it supplies to the municipalities and counties that share in this endeavor. And...
Let me ask you one question, Commissioner Lible. Is two weeks gonna be too long? I mean, do you think we can put this on the agenda so that we can all kind of look at the language and make sure that we're, it's most current? Or do you have some time constraints?
I think that would be fine. I just wanted to share, you know, my thoughts with doing this. I have an example, you can pass it around, it's all in your mailboxes. And I'm just ask you to support it, that's all.
All right, well...
We don't need to lose any revenue streams at this time and we don't need to lose Robin Reservoir. I think we all feel that way.
If we have a consensus among the commission, the information that the commissioner is bringing to us is there. And if we can have that on the agenda as a scheduled item, that way if it's any issues that you have, any concerns with language-wise, we can speak with the administrator and then get it vetted so we can...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. One more thing before I exit. On the CDBG Citizens Advisory Task Force, I want to nominate Marie McLeod, if I could at this time.
Okay.
To serve, she has been ally and a servant in the past for this board and does a good job. job and is willing to serve again.
Okay, as he is exiting the door, we have a proper motion and a second for the appointment of Marie McLeod on the CDBG Citizen Advisory Task Force. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion carries. Be on your way and represent, sir.
Thank you, fellow commissioners.
Any other appointments to the CDBG Citizen Advisory Task Force?
I do. Mr. Leary, would you, I forgot my piece of paper in my office of the lady that I recommended...
Was it Margaret McElvein?
Yes, it was, sir.
What's the name?
Margaret McElvein.
Okay, is that a motion, sir?
Yes, sir, it is.
Have a proper motion for Margaret McElvein?
Second.
Have a proper second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Are there any other CDBG Citizen Advisory Task Force appointees? Have a couple of candidates that we are waiting on a response from, so that we can get that board filled no later than next meeting, because we really need that, that group, that task force activated. Mr. Leary?
I have nothing else. Thank you, sir.
Counsel?
Nothing further, sir.
Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have no items, other than I would like to say I look forward to making some comments about the Better Place Plan as your comptroller at your public hearing.
Absolutely. We would certainly anticipate you not as a guest speaker, but as a speaker.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Commissioner Harvey, anything else?
No, sir, thank you very much. Oh, I would like to say we had a great time, and I didn't want to make anybody feel like they weren't welcome out there at the Iron Horse. I know we all had busy schedules, and I did give greetings from all the commissioners that were there. It was really nice, though, a big event, and I do look forward to it next year, and maybe some of us could go to the disco, the ball in the woods there. That might be a, I remember your days of Palacca Central High and discos, so we can see what that looks like again.
Got a good memory, sir. All right, Commissioner Pelosi, or anything?
Yes, sir, and I may be getting the cart in front of the horse, but just real quickly back to the Better Place issue, this may help us, or I don't think it'll hurt us. In essence, the language on the ballot would come back up as to continue, and as...
It's brought to you at your next meeting as part of the ordinance.
And that would, we anticipate, be the only change in it?
The only substantive change.
Is to continue or to renew, other than that of the rest of the language, what it states that the money would do, would be the same?
I think we need to look at it again and make comments.
Yeah, well, the, again, information that will be in our board packet and for the benefit of all of our citizens will give us some guidance there, because it is a public hearing, so it's not like it, it can't be tweaked even at the meeting, but we'll have advanced copies that are prepared. Okay, Commissioner Harris, anything else?
No, thank you.
This chair would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second.
We are out of here. Have a great day, and thank you all for being here.